Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Gloucester Zoning Board of Appeals Meeting of July 31st, 2025. This is an in-person meeting, but it's also available in a Zoom component, hybrid. So people at home, and there are many logged on already, will be able to participate remotely if they so choose to do so. You would raise, hit your raise hand button when the opportunity came to speak, and we'll recognize you to participate. For the record, this, the Zoom meeting ID for this is 810-8036-9051. I recognize in attendance, myself, Joseph Parisi, Michael Nyman, remotely Peter Canavo, James Gelati, Lauren Norton, and Ronald Wilson. And I declare we have a quorum. First order of business would be the approval of minutes from June 26th and July 7th.
Move approval of minutes as written for June 26th and July 7th, I think is what you said.
Second.
Peyton seconded, roll call.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Mr. Gelati?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Ms. Norton? Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Next is our consent agenda, which is the approval of the chair to sign the following decisions. 81 Riverview Road, 7 Bayberry Lane, 10 Samuel Riggs Circle. I'd like to make a motion.
I could make a motion to approve the chair signing those three decisions. One quick comment, very minor, I think it's on the, the Bayberry, you're called the vice chair instead of the chair. In, in one of those decisions.
Oh, I was? Okay, well, that can be fixed.
Pretty minor, but yes, so I'd move approval.
And we got the one fixed that had you, okay. Okay, motion made.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Gelati?
Yes.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Ms. Norton?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Hey, our first order of business, we had one continued application. It was the application of Craig and Michelle McKenna for a special permit of variance to construct an addition at 18 Elmo Lane. I believe Alex here? And we'll get that on, and remind everyone, we're gonna need your name and address for the record first.
Is Justin speaking? Good evening, my name is Axel Ruiz, 82 Pleasant Street, Gloucester. I am speaking on behalf of the application of Craig and Michelle McKenna.
Axel, can you put that, you almost want to put it right on your chin, take it right off, stick it, put it right on your chin.
How about now?
Yep.
Perfect, I can start over. Uh, my name is Axel Ruiz, 82 Pleasant Street, Gloucester. I am speaking on behalf of the application of Craig and Michelle McKenna, seeking to construct an addition to the single-family residence at 18 Elmo Lane. At this time, we are requesting to withdraw without prejudice.
Thank you. I'm saying a motion to allow withdrawal without prejudice?
I would move that the application be withdrawn without prejudice.
Second.
Second.
Peyton seconded, roll call vote.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Mr. Gelati?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Ms. Norton?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Thank you, Axel.
Thank you.
Draw on. Our first application tonight is the application of Harbor Light Community Partners, DBA Harbor Light Homes, for a comprehensive permit pursuant to general law, Chapter 40B, to construct a multifamily 29 units at 256 Main Street. I'll explain to everyone what we're gonna do tonight, because these are a little longer process. We're gonna allow the applicant to make a full presentation on the project. We will then, uh, take a vote. We're referring to different city committees for their opinions. And then, once we get those back, so we'll probably, we'll continue, um, for four weeks. And then hopefully we'll have all that back, and then we can decide on, uh, any special consultants we need to hire for that project. So we will allow a full presentation by Harbor Light. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Um, my name is Andrew Leonard. Uh, I'm the director of real estate development at Harbor Light Homes. Uh, address is 600 Cummings Center, Suite 270X in Beverly. Uh, I appreciate the opportunity to present tonight. I'm joined with Stefano Basso, our architect, and Paul Campbell, our civil engineer. Uh, so I'm gonna talk about our application, uh, for 29 units of affordable senior housing at 256 Main Street. Uh, quickly about affordable how, uh, about Harbor Light Homes, and go to the next slide. Am I able to adjust it, or should I just call it out? Okay, sorry. Uh, so we are a nonprofit developer, a community development corporation. Uh, we develop and manage affordable homes across the North Shore, so we're based in Beverly, but we have a geography, uh, across the entire North Shore. We're about, uh, down as far south as Sagas and Lynn, up through most of Cape Ann. And you go to the next slide. So one of the things I want to point out is that we both develop, uh, build and manage our affordable housing properties. So not only are we the ones in this early stage and through the construction of the building, uh, but we are the long-term, uh, property managers. So we are, it's the same folks who will be around, you know, 20 years from now, uh, if, and the building's in its, uh, intended use. Uh, we pay property taxes on all of our buildings and are, and attempt to contribute to the community. Uh, and like I said, we hold them for the long term. Our oldest building is in Beverly. It's actually very similar to what we're presenting on here today. It's called Harbor Light House, and that's been in our portfolio for over 60 years. So we can go to the next slide. So just to give you a sense of, you know, we are very locally based here, uh, on the North Shore, as I said. Um, in Gloucester, presently, we operate, uh, a few, uh, affordable homeownership units through the, uh, Community Land Trust of Cape Ann, where the administer, administer for those properties. Uh, I can go to the next slide. Uh, so, you know, we do quite a bit in the realm of, like I said, affordable housing, where we focus on senior housing, supportive senior housing, family housing, uh, and affordable housing for individuals with more intensive needs. Uh, you can see we've got, uh, properties throughout the North Shore. We've got, uh, this project coming up, uh, we have a new project we've permitted in Ipswich. Two projects, one in Rowley, one in Hamilton, that will begin construction later this year, uh, and another project that's permitted in Lynn. We're excited to be presenting this project in Gloucester. I can go to the next slide. That's okay. Thank you for advancing these. Uh, so this parcel at 252, 256 Main Street is currently owned by the Housing Authority. And, uh, they acquired the land back in 1980. Uh, the site is required to be used as affordable housing. Currently, it is used as a vacant lot for parking. Uh, we can speak to that a little bit later as well. In January of 2022, the, the Housing Authority here in Gloucester put out an RFP for a development, uh, for a developer to develop affordable senior housing on this property. Uh, we submitted to that RFP, and were awarded the opportunity to develop it back in the summer of 2022. Uh, and so, sort of to a testament that these things are certainly a marathon, not a sprint. Since 2022, we've been working, uh, through some issues with the parcel. We've been developing drawings, identifying some initial funding and doing some of our initial due diligence. Uh, so we go to the next slide. So to give you a sense of, uh, what we are proposing for this project, uh, this will be 29 affordable homes, all of which will be one-bedroom units. Uh, they will all be designated for seniors 62-plus. The idea is that this will target what's called the frail elderly waiver population. Uh, so this is, uh, a population of seniors that's, uh, this is, this is, uh, independent living for seniors, but this is for seniors who require some wraparound services. Well, I do want to clarify, in one of our, uh, one of our drawings, it did note assisted living as the, the use. This is not assisted living, and we'll submit a corrected sheet on that. Uh, this is independent senior living, uh, with some wraparound services. So it's somewhat of a minor distinction, but, um, one that we want to, uh, be important to call out. The idea is that with this housing, uh, Harbor Light will manage, uh, the building, uh, will manage the affordability, uh, maintain the affordability for seniors. Uh, the idea is you create a critical mass of people in one building who require a similar set of services. So such that, uh, we'll create space in the building for a service provider to come in and provide wraparound services. Uh, so for example, we'll talk about this in a bit, but we'll have a congregate meal space on the first floor, uh, for individuals who are less inclined to be able to cook for themselves on a regular basis. Uh, we'll also have space for a live-in care provider. Uh, so this is almost like, this is a separate unit set aside, not for a resident, but for someone who could spend the night, uh, if they were to provide, uh, home healthcare services, something like that, uh, some of the individuals in the building. Uh, if a, if a resident requires 24-hour overnight care. Uh, so that, so that's a preview of the, the population. Sort of at baseline, what we're proposing is that 16 of those units would be for, uh, households earning 30% of the area median income. We expect that most of these households will be single-person households. Um, in some cases, we do have two-person households in, uh, situations like this, but typically it's one person. Uh, so that income limit is $34,750 currently, to give you a sense of the affordability range. Typically, though, for the 30% area median income tranche, uh, we're looking at people who have some sort of defined benefit. That's really quite small, and what, these units would be supported by a voucher, either through the Section 8 program or through the Massachusetts Rental Voucher Program. Uh, and the individual in that unit would contribute 30% of their income, which would be 30% of some benefits. Oftentimes, it's $0 toward their rent, and that voucher would pick up the rest. Uh, the remaining units, the remaining 13, would be set at 60% of the area median income. And the reason we chose that is that's the, this would be a low-income housing tax credit funded building, and that's the, the threshold for tax credit eligibility. So that's, uh, a one-person household earning about $70,000. That's a, that's an interesting, our attempt is going to be to increase more of the affordability towards that 30% mark, uh, and to push for deeper affordability by pushing for additional vouchers. Um, the 60% area median income level is a trickier one for seniors, because you, you kind of have to thread a needle of particular benefits. Typically, um, a pension, um, kind of a single pension, um, that's fairly modest, but, uh, robust for retirees standards. So those units can sometimes be harder, certainly harder than the 30% units to fill, and we feel like there's a stronger need at the 30% level. So we would, we can, our baseline is that 16 of the units would be at 30% AMI, but we would try and push for deeper affordability there, based on voucher availability. Uh, so the building would be four stories tall. Um, the first floor, uh, would have, uh, and Stefano will get into this a little bit more in more detail, will be ground-level parking and then sort of a half-elevated first floor, which will have, uh, an office for our property manager, uh, bathrooms, uh, and some community space, particularly for the congregate meal space and for kitchens. The idea is that that first floor is half-raised to get it out of the floodplain. We're in the floodplain in this area, um, and Stefano and Paul can talk to that a little bit more. In an attempt to enhance the sustainability, and because we'd be relying on state funding, that would require this. This would be an enterprise green community building and a passive house building, uh, almost certainly. Uh, we'd have that congregate meal space, a catering kitchen for food to be brought in, heat up, served to the residents. Uh, we'd have a library for the residents. We found that to be, uh, a good amenity in our other senior buildings that gets very actively used. Uh, we'd have that overnight staff room I talked about. We'd have our property manager onsite, uh, to, to work with the residents. We'd also have a resident service coordinator, um, to help, uh, identify service needs among the population and identify partners in the community, uh, and help them get connected with those services, and we'd have onsite laundry. I do want to note, we, we've had some discussions already with the Affordable Housing Trust and the CPC here in Gloucester, and gotten a, a ward of local funding from those groups. Um, and somewhat tied to that, we've, uh, committed to requesting the maximum local preference for Gloucester residents from the state. Happy to talk about that more if there are questions. And then we will, uh, be having 16 parking space for residents and, uh, staff on the ground floor. And I'll, I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment. So if we go to the next slide. So in terms of what we're requesting, uh, from, for relief from the, through the comprehensive permit and the 40B process, uh, I'll talk about that through here. Uh, the first, um, well, first I should say this is in the high-density residential R5 zoning district. Uh, we, it will be designated as housing for the elderly. So the, all 29 units will be restricted to persons 62 years or older. What we will need variance is for, and I'm happy to provide, um, additional clarification on this, because I, I think the way it was presented in our application probably deserves a little clarification. First is that, uh, to construct a new multifamily building of seven or more units. This is obviously 29 units, well, more than seven, uh, requires a special permit. So we would require that changed through the comprehensive permit. Um, the front yard setback is only, is less than a foot here. Uh, so that's far less than, um, what is typically required in the R5, um, district, although we feel it matches the character of the neighborhood here. The left side yard setback is quite small, it's only about five feet. So it's a, it's, um, about, uh, two and a half feet shy of the required setback there. And then the maximum building height, uh, we're at 47 feet, um, for this, uh, for this building. And, uh, Stefano can walk through the things that he's done to sort of mitigate the impact of that height. I think, um, the height, uh, while it sounds quite a bit taller than what's surrounding, has been structured in a way to lessen that impact on the street. Uh, so i- in our application, we had noted three other areas that are needing relief, but we believe actually through the housing for the elderly designation, um, we're, we've received, uh, we are granted that relief. So typically, for a regular project, we would be required to include 29 spaces. Under housing for the elderly, uh, that can be cut in about a third, so that would be 10 spaces. Our project is offering 16. I do want to note that we are, you know, we are very sensitive, um, to the issue of parking in the neighborhood here and the loss of, uh, what's been used as a parking lot. We feel very strongly that this site has long been intended, since it was acquired by the Housing Authority, to be used as affordable housing. We certainly respect that this is creating a loss of parking for folks who utilize, um, at this stretch of Main Street. But we feel like the need here in Gloucester for affordable homes for seniors, uh, is particularly pressing and warrants this, uh, this change. You know, in Gloucester, about, uh, about half of rental households are paying more than 30% of their income and are considered cost burdened, uh, so there's a real lack of affordability. About a quarter of renter households in the city are severely rent burdened, means they're paying more than 50% of their rent, or excuse me, 50% of their income in rent. Uh, and there's, you know, the, the population of Gloucester is aging. And there's gonna be a continued growing need for senior housing for residents to be able to, who've, you know, made their living and grown up in Gloucester and who want to stay in Gloucester and live independently and age in community in Gloucester. So we think this is a really important, um, resource for those individuals. Uh, additionally, the lot area and open space requirements can be, uh, diminished through the elderly housing designation. So, uh, as we read it, so typically, an R5 12 homes would be allowed as of right. Um, but we believe that 36 are technically allowed under the elderly housing designation. Uh, and again, we're proposing 29. So we can go to the next slide. And this is just to the point, um, I was making a bit earlier about the need for housing in Gloucester. So, you know, we've had several housing lotteries recently on the North Shore, uh, here in Beverly, Rockport, uh, and Wenham. And we're seeing applications for these affordable units, you know, coming from, you know, neighboring communities. Uh, you know, in some instances, well, in excess of 10 applications for every unit of affordable housing. And I would expect for the population we're targeting here in this building, uh, and for the municipality here in Gloucester, that we would likely, I would expect we'll see applications of 10 or more per, per affordable unit. So this is just to, you know, we understand this is gonna be a change. Uh, and that's long been a vacant lot there, you know, for the past, um, you know, for decades at this point, but we think that the need is there for it. Uh, we think our design fits in, uh, with the overall character of the neighborhood, uh, and that it's a, an appropriate place to help put a dent in the, uh, the affordable housing crisis here, across the state and in Gloucester itself. So with that, I'll turn it over to Stefano, who can walk through, uh, the architectural piece of things.
Hey, good evening, Stefano Basso with SV Design Office at 126 Dodge Street in Beverly. Uh, if we can go to the next slide. Thank you. Uh, the site's located on Main Street, sort of towards the beginning of Main Street, um, in a dense, uh, area. The buildings tend to be pretty closely spaced, uh, not a lot of setback typically. Uh, this parcel does have, um, a good amount of open space to the rear. It backs onto, um, a wooded cliff area. If we can go to the next slide, please. So here we are zoomed in, you can see the parking layout on the existing site. Buildings on either side, and the grade change is pretty extreme. We're up about 30 or 40 feet as we head back from Main Street towards the rear of the site. A little bit of grade across, uh, Main Street, but not, not too much to deal with here. Next slide. So we have a view of the existing lot, uh, looking east, back towards the beginning of Main Street. You can see the Nelson's Building over on the left, uh, mixed-use building over on the right side here. And you can see some of the, uh, tree cover in the back there. Then the same view looking to the west. You can tell a little bit better from this angle, uh, this section of Main Street sort of curves around gently. Um, so on approach, you are seeing the, a little bit more of, um, our lot, uh, if you're driving or walking down the street in this direction. It also creates a, a frontage on the property that's at an angle, um, whereas the sides of the site are kind of square to each other into the neighboring buildings. The front of the site bends around, um, and you can see how we dealt with that when we get into the building footprint. We got another photo or two here. Can't really see our site from here, but up on the hill, um, looking above, uh, you can see that it's, uh, shielded from the street view. And more of the same. So looking at the site plan here, uh, we have the parking garage, um, colored in darker gray. Uh, Main Street over to the right of the plan, uh, with the two neighboring buildings, uh, to the top and bottom. And then over to the left, and kind of wrapping around the rear of the building, you can see all the topography lines. Um, so you can see we're jumping up from about elevation 10, 10, 11, at the street and sidewalk. Um, and then pass the building, quickly get up 20, 30, 40, um, as we get to the back and sides of the site. The, uh, parking garage is entered by, um, garage door, uh, sort of towards the middle of the site. We have mostly a single-loaded, uh, drive aisle with the bank of parking spaces along the bottom of the plan. A few more spaces up on the opposite side. Uh, we have a, uh, enclosed trash room, uh, that's right next to the garage door. So that's just, um, below where the double doors open up onto the sidewalk. So that's where we would have, uh, a couple dumpsters for trash and recycling, located within the building, um, properly vented up through the roof, um, protected from the public there. Main, uh, entry door for residents is, uh, in the yellow area, so the yellow represents all of our public circulation area. Um, so just plan north of the garage door here, we have our front door, opens right up onto the sidewalk. Uh, it's a pretty small lobby, um, compared to some other buildings like this that we do. We're trying to keep the space, uh, at the sidewalk level to a minimum. Uh, the code requires us to stay above the floodplain here. Uh, so where the grade, um, is down at 10 or 11 feet, uh, floodplain elevation is up at 14, and we're required to stay, um, additional height above that. Um, so the bulk of our occupied first floor, um, is set up at elevation 16, um, safely above the floodplain level. The parking garage is laid out as an open garage, um, so that in the event of a flood, ocean water could come in, storm water. It can recede out on its own, uh, with minimal damage. Um, so in the immediate yellow section, um, at the entry, we have a mailroom, uh, access to one of the, uh, egress stairs, and then entrance to the elevator. Uh, so that's all we have in the front lobby. And then up about a half level, um, is the green section of the plan. So that's the, uh, community dining room, uh, that Andrew was talking about, um, along with the property manager's office. Um, so folks could come in, they could walk up the stairs, or they could take the elevator up to that, uh, common area. Uh, there's a couple toilet rooms there, and then a small, uh, catering-style kitchen where food could be brought in, prepared off-site, and served to residents in the dining hall. In the lighter gray color, we have, um, in the bottom right corner, the fire protection room where the water and sprinkler line would come in. Uh, more to the back, there's a electrical room where our switchgear would be. And then additionally, some, uh, other utility space sort of back towards the rear of the building. And then in the bottom left corner, we have our second, uh, fire stair that would be for emergency exit only. Um, so that stair leads out to, uh, a small pathway, um, that runs along the property line, um, between the building and the neighbor's property, exits out onto Main Street. Um, up on the planned north side, um, we have a 20-foot setback. So this is something we've been working through in detail. With DPW, there's some existing, um, drain lines, uh, that currently run through the site. Uh, so the city's requested, uh, an easement, um, to allow for future access and maintenance, potential replacement of those pipes. So the, the building in its entirety is setback 20 feet from the property line to allow that, that room for future excavation, excavation work. Um, so in the meantime, we're proposing, um, an access drive aisle, uh, that could be used by the fire department, just to get down to the side of the building. Uh, if you can see the lines that sort of start to cut across that drive aisle at the top of the plan, uh, that indicates the grade, um, sort of, at first gradually, and then pretty quickly, it starts sloping up pretty steeply. Um, so we looked closely, um, with Paul, our civil engineer, at these drains. And they drop, they drop from way up the hill, um, down, and then follow grade right into Main Street. So there's not a lot of coverage there, so we're just staying away. We're keeping the grade in that area as it is and trying to, uh, not avoid it, um, as much as we can. Um, we are showing, uh, a small row of plantings, just foundation shrubs along that side of the building, um, to help soften the edge of the building. Um, you probably won't see too far back, um, unless you're standing right there looking back. Probably the front corner on the approach as you head down the street would be visible, so we thought it would be, um, advantageous to have some plantings to help soften the building there. Do the next slide. Thank you. So this is our second floor. Um, it's a pretty typical floor. We have, uh, three levels of apartments above that first floor. Um, so it's a typical double-loaded corridor scheme. These are all one-bedroom apartments. Uh, each one has a, a full bedroom, um, a living room, and a full kitchen. So not a kitchenette, it would have, uh, full stove, fridge, microwave, um, so folks could kick, cook for themselves. Um, they also have the option to eat in the dining room, but, um, as an independent living, uh, it's a full one-bedroom apartment. Um, over to the right side of the plan, um, you can see in yellow the stair coming up in the elevator. Um, so those stack through all floors, and then that other fire stair down to the bottom left stacks all the way up. Uh, in green, over to the right on the Main Street side, um, we have, uh, a mix of different, uh, common amenities spaces on each level. Um, so on this level, we're including, uh, secondary office. So that would be for a resident services coordinator, who could work with residents, find them services, um, help in various ways. And then a laundry room with a couple washers and dryers here. And then we have some additional, uh, utilities support spaces in light gray. We jump up, the next plan should look- We jump up, the next plan should look just identical. So on this floor, the only difference is a slight mix in the utilities, trying to work with the space we have. So in lieu of that secondary office on this floor, we have the overnight support staff room. So that would be a place for somebody who's providing services for residents. They could stay there, so it would have a bathroom and maybe a small bed for them to stay, and another laundry room there. If we jump up to the fourth floor, pretty similar as well, but if you noticed on the front, there's one fewer apartment here, so the one all the way to the right. As we get up to the top floor, we've stepped the building back, so that's why we have 29 units instead of 30 units. And we thought that that was a big benefit to the appearance of the building. As you come down Main Street, we're hoping that, you know, the real look and feel of the building is primarily as a three-story building rather than more of a harsher four-story facade right on the street. So we have an additional library space up here at the end of the hallway. And then on the roof plan, we have mostly a flat roof structure, low pitch just for stormwater drainage. The hatched areas are for future solar panels, so we're trying to maximize the space for a solar array. We're locating mechanical equipment towards the center of the roof. We're always really sensitive about the view of rooftop equipment from the street, so we have some tricks that we use. We try to have a small parapet around the roof edge to kind of cut down on view, and we try to locate as much of the equipment towards the center of the roof and towards the rear of the building as possible. So this is a schematic layout. We haven't had the systems engineered yet, but based on what we've seen in other buildings, this is what we would anticipate. An ERV for ventilation, energy recovery up on the roof, and some condensers for electric heating and cooling. You can also see in the top-right corner, above where the stairwell and elevator are, a little bit of a penthouse, so the elevator pokes up through for a few extra feet of headroom clearance that's required by the elevator code. And then we have a sloped roof over the stair that's not required by code, but it's something that we did for the exterior appearance. So as you'll see in the exterior elevations, we've added a bit of a feature in terms of a clock tower in that location, so that's where it is in plan. Then over on the right side, that roof that's indicated, that's down above the third floor. So here's the view from directly across the street, looking at the building. The base of the building is a red brick, so we're, we always try to borrow materials and forms from the neighborhood when we're putting a new building together. So we, you know, we look around Main Street and we're very familiar. We like the red brick, it's just a classic. The more durable material tends to hold up better at the base of the building, where there's more potential for wear and tear, snow removal, getting bumped by things. We also have a little bit of a granite veneer base that we think adds just a little bit of detail and interest to the building, so you're not looking at just a story of brick. So that would just be a low granite wraparound with a small stone cap on it. And we've taken that same granite detail and brought out a few planters. So over at the left side, next to a seating, a small seating area, there's a bench on the sidewalk. We brought out that granite wraparound for a planting bed. And then over by the front door, which is to the right of the garage door, similar detail. The garage door in the middle will be an open-air metal grate-style garage door. This is required to allow the water to come in and also recede, so we don't have the opportunity to do an opaque door, any kind of glazing in the garage door there. We're showing a bit of conceptual signage, so that's something we can work through. People always have different opinions on signage, but we think a little bit of sort of gentle branding adds some interest, and that seemed like a good wall. Definitely wants some sort of development, so we thought signage could be a good thing to do there. On the upper floors, you can see the second and third floor prominently from this angle. The closer you get to the building, probably the more the fourth floor is screened from view, and probably the further away you stand, especially on the approach, the more you would see the top floor. But I think this demonstrates from directly across the street, a good portion of the top floor is screened from view. So the building overall is traditional in style. We have windows that will be probably not double-hung windows. As a passive house building, usually we have to use something a little tighter and more energy-efficient, but we can get a window unit that's simulated to look like a traditional double-hung window, fits in with the neighborhood really well. Divided light, we're showing a six-over-one grille pattern. PVC casing around all the windows. The siding will be cementitious siding, so hardy building products. We're showing a board and batten for this section of the building on the left that bumps out, so that would be a vertical one-by-three band spaced at 12 or 16 inches on center on a smooth panel. And to the right, the section that's more of a warm sort of beige color is a shingle panel. So they come in a four-foot length, but they look visually like a traditional-style shake and in this warmer, light taupe color. The idea is that it would look a little bit more like a weathered cedar shingle in feel. The board and batten is a light mist color, so a very gentle gray. We've included some shutters on the front of the building. We think it helps to break up the scale and add a little bit of interest. We always try to balance not doing too much that it feels busy and not enough that it feels plain, so we're trying to strike the right balance here. On the top of the brick at the transition, there's a soldier course, a vertical row of bricks, and then we've included some horizontal bands of skirtboard to help that transition as well. Up at the top of the third floor, we have projecting cornice line, so that would be one-by-10 or so with a one-by-four shadow board on the fascia, about a one-foot overhang and some additional trim. So not too decorative, but, you know, it should create a good shadow line on the top. And then you can start to see the clock tower over on the right side, so that lets a lot of natural light into the stair. We always try to lay out the buildings with stairs that residents will actually use. You know, we have requirements to kind of keep them at the remote corners of the building. You really want one centrally located so that folks might take the stairs instead of always taking the elevator. So this is nice on a shorter building, especially with this stair being right on the street. I could see some folks who are able to, taking this stair, coming right out the front door and walking downtown. So the roof on that clock tower is a standing seam metal, so we're just showing a black standing seam metal. And then we are including a weather vane that would be sort of typical of some of the other ones you see around town, a gold-colored nautical theme. We've included a cod here for conceptual purposes. What else do we have? Oh, there is a canopy. It's tough to see from this angle, directly above the garage door. It kind of follows the property line a little bit, so it's coming across at an angle. And if we go to the next view, it might be a little bit more visible. Well, this one's zoomed out, but on the approach, a couple buildings back, I think it demonstrates that, you know, a lot of the buildings in this section are two and a half or three stories, so the setback sort of works to set our buildings' more prominent roof line kind of at that datum point of other buildings on the street with the fourth floor setback and also a little obscured by the clock tower. So working with Harbor Lake, with their mission for affordable housing, the idea is, you know, the building wants to fit into the community, it wants to feel like it belongs here, but it also doesn't want to be too passive. You know, we want to be proud of providing affordable housing and making a home for folks that feels like something that they want to be proud of and have people recognize and not just kind of walk by and not notice. So then from this view, it might be a little bit clearer. So the canopy above the garage door kind of wraps from the most prominent bumpout over the main entry door to the right side, so it's a little bit deeper where the building steps back and a little bit shallower at the corners of the building. You can also see some of the exterior lighting, so we have some gooseneck sconces, all black finish, so a couple gooseneck lights around the garage door. We have some lights in the canopy as well, so all the exterior lights are downlights, dark sky compliant, cut off. And we are showing conceptually some new street trees. The driveway curb cut is close to the same location as the existing parking lot. I think it's shifting a little bit, so the sidewalk will need to be reworked. And with utility work, we'll need to patch in the sidewalk, so any kind of patching work will match the existing brick, and we're actually going to be extending the sidewalk back towards the building for the seating area and the entry. So there'll be more of that brick kind of extending to the building, and, you know, we'll work with the city to, you know, hopefully get some street trees in there. We've shown a couple that we think fit pretty well. Obviously, we'll have to work together to see what actually goes in there. We have the technical elevations, so these are drawn to scale. They're noted up with the materials, so you can see exactly what we are actually owning with the proposed design. These have the dimensions too, so Andrew mentioned 47-foot height. So the 47 is from Main Street to the top of the fourth floor, so that doesn't include the penthouse of the elevator or the stair tower. But you can see back at the rear of the site, you know, essentially it's a three-story building, and then at some point as you go up, grade is almost above the roof of the I guess if we could go back one, the renderings didn't show the side of the building. Thanks. So on the long side of the building here, you can see that at the first floor where the office and dining hall is, we've included some larger storefront-style windows, so those would be fixed windows to let some light in. We have the nice setback on that side, so we're trying to get as much light into the common space as we can. And then up above, the same siding type on the upper floors continues back. We did introduce a few vertical elements to help break up that longer, flatter side. In an earlier scheme, we had some different bays and boxes to help break up that facade, but with the height of the easement area sloping up, we weren't able to have any projections that kind of impeded working clearance for excavator to be back there. So we've flattened it out, but we added in some trim bands, so kind of siding accents. So if you do look down the alleyway, you know, you can see a little bit of that rhythm coming with the double windows and the siding change that connects the windows together. And we brought the board and batten siding on the top floor all the way around and maintained that cornice line at the floor line of the fourth floor. And then the back of the building, not many people will see, and the other side of the building, pretty similar in concept. You can see some openings towards the rear of the garage, so those are just more areas for water to get in and out potentially in the future. So there is a security gate. It would be sort of a black metal fence that would prevent anybody who might get back there from gaining access to the garage from the side of the building. And we have the material board. I've touched on most of this, I won't run through everything. We are using a blue color as the accent for doors, so the main entry door is trying to get as much glass as possible, is a storefront door with a black frame, but the secondary egress doors, so out of the two fire stairs, the trash room and sprinkler room, any of the other exterior doors will be this pale blue color. Then we have some building sections that cut through and show the different floor levels and the height of the building relative to the surrounding grade. So these are estimated, but, you know, we try to match the topo lines that are on there just to give you a sense. And then we've included some typical unit interior layouts as well. And on the landscape plan, just a little bit more detail, we've tagged some of the plantings, intent on the plantings. There's not a huge landscape package here with the tight site, but native species, drought tolerant. We're looking for things that are low-maintenance and resilient so that they'll do well and be around for a long time. And some more detail here. And then we've worked with the lighting designer to look at the photometrics on the exterior lighting. So, you know, we always have an eye to minimize or avoid any kind of light spill off-site, not get too hot on any lighting zones or have too dark of an area. There's a minimum we need to maintain in path of egress, so we're making sure we're hitting that and not doing too much either. So you can see the gooseneck light that are on the front of the building, the recessed lights that are in the canopy, and then these wall packs that are on more the sides of the building, where we don't need something as decorative, but still looks nice, lightly nautical. All right. Thank you.
Right, and now I'll keep this brief. Paul Campbell, chess engineer and the surveyor and the civil engineer for this project. So Stefano described the site very well. I just want to briefly describe what we're doing from a civil perspective. So as a reminder, this property is in a hundred-year flood zone, and because of that, we're going to be in front of the Conservation Commission for approval for the flood zone, and because we're at conservation, stormwater approval for the Massachusetts Stormwater Standards and the local Gloucester standards. So we've prepared the site plans and a stormwater package for review now, knowing that it's going to go through a couple changes as we get through conservation. But real briefly, what we're planning to do, the site is really challenging. It's a lot of shallow bedrock, ledge outcrop by the hill, high groundwater, but, and we are adding a building that's increasing the impervious area on the property, but what we're going to do is we're going to capture all the stormwater from the roof, and we're going to send it to a stormwater system that's going to be in and amongst the foundation of the building. And the parking, what's nice now is now the parking, the existing use of the parking lot that's running untreated to Main Street. The proposed parking is going to be covered by the building, so you're not going to have the typical runoff from a parking lot that you would have, that you have now today, but we're still going to capture that runoff, whatever's coming off the cars, treat that and send it to the same underground system. Stefano mentioned the city's using that property. There's a sewer and a stormwater line coming through the property, so we're giving it easement to make sure that the city can still maintain those lines, and then we'll be connecting into those lines for our sewer and our stormwater system. The exact details, we're still working out as it's going to change if anything changes about the building shape or location, but, you know, we believe the site will work, and like we said, we're going to be in front of conservation for approval, particularly for the stormwater and for flood compensation. So just really briefly leave it at that. I brought the site plans if anybody has any questions. Thanks.
All right.
Since we submitted, the owners of Nelson's next door have reached out about some assistance with creating a parking space for them. We're attempting to make that work. That could result in a minor change to the site footprint, very minor. But I just wanted to raise that 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 has come up since we submitted and we're looking to resolve that so we can get, if there is a revision, get that to you as quickly as possible.
All set? Thank you. So what we do is we've referred this to a host of city departments, you know, from public works to fire, police, or the health, and giving them a time period to comment to us on the project. Because this is a 40B and it, your full permitting is here at this level. But we're going to get their feedback. And based on their feedback and discussions with you folks, we will determine if and which independent third party advice will be asking to be hired. I anticipate there's going to be some drainage questions and whatnot. One thing I didn't notice in the packet, a couple of questions asked, request for waivers. We haven't seen that in the application. So typically, you mentioned some variances and whatnot. Usually with a 40B, it's a comprehensive permit, and you would ask for waivers on certain things like dimensional requirements, or height, or things like that, fees, all kinds of things that you could possibly ask. Will that be forthcoming?
Yes, I apologize about that. We'll get that to you next week.
And will you be handling completely? Or do you have legal?
We don't right now have legal, so it'll run through us.
So our, our legal consultant and coordinator through this is the city solicitor Suzanne Egan. And so we direct things through the building department into her as we go. I think what we're going to do is we're giving the city boards and whatnot a timeframe to get back to us. We obviously, it wouldn't be within two weeks. So I think we're going to continue this for four weeks, which would be August 28th, at which time we'll, we'll update what we've received, we'll review those, and we'll probably make some determinations at that point if we need to hire any consultants for this as advisors. And I think we'll also that night, begin the public testimony portion of it, allow people that wish to speak about the project for or against to be, to speak that night. I will not close public testimony until we reach the very end. So anyone that, as the plan develops, some people have different comments, that's okay. I'd hold back on anything that's probably going to get answered as we unveil this and get advice and get opinions from the different commissions. But everyone's willing to speak, and I will make sure that there were multiple opportunities for the public. With that in mind, I'd like to get a motion to continue to August 28th.
I make a motion to the application of Abilite Community Partners, Abilite Homes for a comprehensive permit pursuant GL 40B to construct multifamily 29 units at 256 Main Street, continue to August 28th.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Roll call.
Ms. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Mr. Jalati?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes. They've heard our continuance. We'll see you in a month. Appreciate the nice presentation.
Thank you very much, y'all.
Alrighty, moving into our regular applications. First is the application of Carl D. Frank for a special permit or variance to add in addition at 15 Haskell Street.
My name is Carl D. Frank. I don't always use the D, but it's on my application. So I guess I got to stand up for it. I bought my property at 15 Haskell Street.
Will you just state your address?
Oh, my address is 15 Haskell Street. It's on the corner of Haskell Court. And I bought that property in 1992. I've lived there ever since. I did not realize I would be retiring there when I bought it. I bought it because my wife had a job in Ipswich and I had a job in Boston. And Gloucester was the best place in between those two. And I am applying for this special permit and variance because in actual fact, in March, I fell on the street on a walk with my wife, and a passerby stopped his car to help me get up. And when I told my kids about it, they said, Dad, we have to have a conference. You do not have a bathroom on the first floor, nor do you have a bedroom on the first floor. What would you be doing if you were in a wheelchair now? And so I have with the help of a designer, designed an addition to the house that provides a downstairs bedroom with separate egress to the back of the house. So you do not have to go either through the front or the back door to get out of that room and to out outside the house. And it also has a Americans with Disabilities Act compliant bathroom, which requires a five foot radius in the middle of the bathroom to be able to get a wheelchair in there. And because of the requirements for the downstairs bathroom and so on, I am one foot beyond the limit of how close I'm coming to my neighbor's house on the Haskell Court side. The setback requirement there for the maps is 10 feet, and my plan would put me nine feet from that neighbor. So this is the reason for my appearance here. I have not engaged a lawyer, and I haven't yet hired a builder to represent me in this. And I have never done this before. I assume that some of the pictures that I sent you might be available to show everyone on, do you have the picture of?
Y'all have a full copy of everything that you submitted to review.
Would it be possible for them to be, or at least some, at least the picture, the sketch, that, the three dimensional sketch of the addition? Yes, that. Would it be possible to show that on the screen? Could you, could you please do that? Or?
Give us a second. We're trying to do it.
Anyway, let me, let me to fill the dead space here, say that what we have designed is a gable roofed addition, one story high, which, which connects to the existing house using the existing rear entrance way. So that what we, what we're, what we've designed is a single bedroom separated from the house by the width of the bathroom. Here it is. So this is a view from the north, and in yellow is the addition. And there's been a change where it says, it says slider for egress. That's the separate exit from the added bedroom. The added bedroom also can be reached through the connector, which is labeled there. And the connector is also the home of the bathroom. So the width of the connector has to accommodate the width of the bathroom. And then the, the separate little house that looks like, well, it looks like sort of a, well, it's a gable roofed little house of its own. It's, so it looks pretty attractive in terms of the neighborhood design.
Good job.
Well, it's not just my, I hired Charles Nazarian to help me with the aesthetics of it.
Charles would draw.
It's his drawing. It's true. So that's my, my, my problem is to get approval for being nine feet rather than 10 feet from the side where the bay window is shown there. And that that side of the house faces Nicole's house. So if anybody has any objections to that, she's number one objector. And I'll let her speak for herself if you wish, if you wish us to. I don't know, have I covered everything that you need? Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Yeah, you, you can sit down for a minute, sir, I think.
Okay.
Unless you guys have questions for me.
No, I have nothing more to add.
Joe, I think what he, I think what he needs, special permit, alter and expand. He needs a variance for left side, and he needs a lock coverage variance.
Would he need lock coverage on alter and expand, a non-conforming structure on a non-conforming lot? Thought it would be part of the special permit. We can include.
I don't know the answer to that question.
We can include it.
I, I thought you would just automatically need it, but.
No, I think, what was that? Yeah, let's, let's include the variance on coverage. Okay.
Yeah.
So we're going to open up public testimony. Is anyone wishing to speak in favor? Again, I remind you, if you're watching at home on a device, you'd hit your raise hand button. If you happen to be calling in on a phone, you dial star nine if you wish to speak. Anyone in the audience is free to come up at any time during public testimony. Again, remind you, just name and address for the record. And then once we establish that, you can tell us what you think. Thank you.
My name is Nicole Andrade Service. I live at 3 Haskell Court. My property line abuts the setback that Carl was just talking about. My husband and I own, Matthew Service owned the house at 3 Haskell Court. And I am more than happy to allow, if you're willing, these beloved neighbors to have a foot closer to my property so that they can age safely at home. It's a thoughtful design. They're wonderful neighbors, and I'm strongly in favor of, and supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in favor?
Joe.
Watch on the screen because the list is pretty long.
Joe, just a comment before you move to the opposition. When I was there, I spoke with this lady who owns three, and Dave Ennis, who I've known for years and years, lives directly across the street. Spoke to him for about 20 minutes, and he was absolutely in favor as well. That's what he expressed to me while I was talking with him.
Anyone else in favor? We'll move to opposition. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the hearing, to it? Any opposition? Seeing none, we'll close public testimony. Be no need for any rebuttal. Discussion by the board? Are we, everybody comfortable?
Comfortable.
So we'll be looking for a motion to approve a special permit to alter and expand a variance for left side yard setback and block coverage.
I would move approval for a special permit and for the two variances for left side and lock coverage. I think the gentleman in the need of the specific bathroom, creating the width and the distance, and I believe he needs two feet. That's probably what we should give him just to make sure. Because I think the plot plan shows close to a two foot variance for the left side. And I think it's almost de minimis, de minimis at 32% versus 30%. And I think it is increasing non-conformity, but it is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. So I'd move approval, special permit and for both variances.
Second.
Both made and seconded. Roll call, vote.
Mr. Jalati?
Yes.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes, for all the relief.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Ms. Norton? Ms. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
I also vote yes. You've heard a decision's favorable. We will be drafting a decision that gets out to you at some point. You'll have instructions to follow before you're able to start your project. Thank you.
Good luck.
Alright.
Good neighbor.
Our next hearing is the application of Seaworks LLC for a special permit or variance to construct a single family home at 4 Conic.
Conicus.
Cononicus.
Cononicus Road. Conic, Cononicus Road. I've said it a million times. Attorney?
Yes.
Ellis.
If you know, I won't, you don't have to answer this question, but I'm curious at some point, do we know when that lot was created? Do you know?
It was recent, but I don't know the exact date of that.
I'm also interested in who created it, if we know that.
Seaworks LLC created the lot, along with several others in that neighborhood. My client is a purchaser of the lot.
I understand. Yep. So who, who currently owns the lot?
It's Seaworks LLC.
So Seaworks created the lot, and they currently own the lot?
Yes. Yes, they do.
Thank you very much.
For the record, Deborah Ellison, Ellison Law Office, 63 Middle Street, Gloucester. And Mr. Chairman, if I may share my screen. The applicant is Brian Miller, and he, as I said, has a purchase and sale agreement to purchase the property. The owner is Seaworks LLC. The architect is Redden Barn Architecture, and Ryan McShara is on Zoom in case you have any technical questions with regard to the property. My client is seeking to construct a single family home on a conforming lot, and he's requesting two variances, 10 feet from the front yard setback where 30 feet is required, and 16 feet 6 inches from the rear yard setback, again, where 30 feet is required. Mr. Miller has a purchase and sale to purchase this conforming lot at 4 Cononicus Road. He intends to build a home that has approximately 3,700 square feet of living space, which is averaged by today's standards. The property is in the R20 district, and the lot is conforming at 23,000 square feet. Both side yards are compliant, as you can see. And both lot coverage will be 15%, where 25% is allowed. And the height of the building will be 30 feet, which is also allowed. The front yard setback will be 20 feet from the front property line. It is actually farther back from the sideline of the road. So at the portion of the building that is closest to the property line, it's actually about 28 feet from the road itself. As you can see, the footprint of the house is uneven. And so what it does is it breaks up the front elevation along the roadway. The middle part of the building will have a roof that pitches towards the back away from the street, again minimizing the mass of the building. The rear yard setback will be 13 feet 6 inches, and it's offset from the house that is behind it. And no other zoning relief is required. There will be a combined kitchen, living room, dining area, three bedrooms, two and a half bathrooms, and a two car garage. So this is the property. You can see in the middle, this is the roof that pitches back. So it minimizes the mass. I'm sorry, I think this is the, this is the front of the house. There's also a porch, so that also limits the mass that is on the street. This is the left side of the house. And this is the rear of the property and the. This is the left side of the house, and this is the rear of the property and the right My client spoke to or contacted all of the legal abutters that were on the abutters list, as well as some neighbors, and he's received four letters of support from the closest neighbors. This is the lot. You can see that it's a narrow triangle with a long tail that goes to the ocean. He has letters of support from 33 King Philip Road, from 25 King Philip Road, which is sort of diagonal, from 26 Uncus Road, which is a vacant lot owned by the people who are farther back up on the hill, and then from 13 Cononicus Road, which is a little ways down. The, Mr. Miller owns 31 King Philip Road, so he has an interest, as he's a direct abutter, in how this lot gets developed. And his intention is for his parents to build a home there. The variance should be granted because of the substantial hardship due to the unique characteristics of the property. The lot, as you can see, is a unique shape. It's very narrow rectangle with the long tail. In green, this is the setback line, so it is very difficult to be able to site a home within that setback. The topography also drops off significantly on the northwest side, and that also dictates that the house be pushed more to the east. It's also constrained by some ledge on the east. The location of the house balances the distance from the road, as well as the rear yard setback and the riparian line. So there is a riparian line here that is a sensitive conservation resource that the house was designed to be sited as far away from as possible. I would suggest that it will not substantially undercut the purpose of the GZO because minimal relief is being requested, and the house has been designed to minimize the impact on both the front and the rear yards, setting it farther from the road and also offsetting it from the other house. So I would request that you grant these variances, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Front questions by the board?
Comments, not questions, so I'll wait.
Okay.
You're, you're not seeking a special permit for parking?
No, because the lot is conforming.
Rear yard only. No special permit. Oh, well, okay. No questions at this time. We'll open up testimony. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application, please come forward, or if you're on Zoom, you can raise your hand. I see one hand up. Who was that? Is that? Was a hand up? No? Mr. Alcock, you're muted. Unmute, and then we can proceed.
Am I muted now?
We can hear you. We'll ask you your name and address first.
Yes, please, thank you. My name is Peter Alcock, A-L-C-O-C-K. I live at number 16 Cononicus Road, an Indian name, by the way, and it's several houses down from the proposal. I have some problems with this design, and I have some problems with the approach.
Are you, sir, excuse me?
Yes.
So I take it from your opening remarks, you're not speaking in favor?
I'm speaking against it.
Okay, we haven't got there yet.
Oh, you haven't? Okay.
Hang on. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposal? Anyone in favor, come forward or raise your hand? Seeing none, now we'll go to opposition, and we'll go to Mr. Alcock.
Thank you, sir. The reason, I, I don't have a problem with the house, what I have a problem with is these 20-foot setback in the front. This is not an average house for this neighborhood. The average house in this neighborhood is probably 2,000 square feet, and this is about double the size of it. So this is a substantial home. It's a loving home. It's well-designed. I don't have a problem with that. What I do have a problem with is this house is going to be put at a little bit of an elevation for the road, and it's going to be, it, it's going to really, it's, it's going to be something that really cut it in your face. So my, my complaint here is, is the, is the 20-foot setback. I think it should be 30-foot setback. Now, they would like to have a 20-foot, but they're both parties, both Brian and Sea Works, have a substantial financial interest in this going through. Sea Works created this lot, which only has a 20-foot wide conforming surface. You can't build a home of any substance with only 20-foot conforming. I mean, the only thing you could put on there is probably a trailer, basically. So I would like to see this moved back, this plan redesigned, so it's moved back 20 to, to 30 feet instead of 20 feet requested. That would put it closer to Sea Works' home and closer to Brian's home, but they're the ones that are going to be benefiting from this in the first place, and everybody else is going to be, you know, is, is going to suffer the consequences, if you will. So I think, frankly, I think the house would show better if it was 30-foot back, because it's such a substantial house, to have it sitting practically in a row of 20 feet, it is a little bit, is a little bit difficult.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Any other opposition? Saying, saying none, we'll, we'll close public testimony, and we'll have the opportunity
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of the things that we were concerned about with regard to this project was to be sensitive to the, the riparian way, riparian zone, so that the property had, the house has been moved closer to the street, but as I said, from a practical perspective, the road is almost 30 feet away from where the house is going to be. And it, I think that this is a reasonable compromise between the two. We also have support from all of the neighbors that are closest, or at least no objections from those neighbors. And Mr. Alcock is probably the least affected of all. He is not a legal abutter, but he is a neighbor. He's approximately four lots away, so he will not be directly impacted by this house other than when he drives by it. So I would suggest to you that it meets the legal standards for a variance, and that it does have support of the immediate neighbors who will be affected by this, and we'd ask that you grant the variances. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So this created by a Form A application, I take it?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not more familiar with how it was created. I wasn't involved in that. I do believe it was a Form A art.
Because it was one property, the house in the back, it obviously had a driveway and all.
Joel, I think knows.
Mr. Favazza was involved in that.
For the record, Joel Favazza, Cecil Legal Solutions, 123 Main Street. I represent Sea Works. Originally, these were very small, non-conforming lots that were designed before subdivision control. When Mr. Baker acquired them, he began combining, he actually worked with some of the neighbors, the bakers, et cetera, the bakers, and a few others to combine these lots and then re-divide them out to create conforming lots. So there was, this lot that exists here is the combination of several lots to get it up to the size it needs to be. All the historic lots out there were much too small. It was all done through the planning board.
I still, I guess I have the same question. Is this a self-created hardship?
My client, as I said, was not involved in the creation of the lot, and he certainly has an interest in owning the lot that is going to be closest to him, but it was not something that he was involved in.
So, so I'm going to answer your question. To me, this is a, not by, not by you, sir. You're interested, and I, I think you have a beautiful design in your home and all that sort of stuff. I have a major problem in principle with what's going on here, that, that the gentleman that Joel was just mentioning, who owns, who owns, created these lots, he created this lot. He created a problem lot. So it has the square footage, but it doesn't really have a seriously buildable area because of the long tail that was created to get it over 20,000 square feet. So I respect what he did. I don't have any, I don't have any issue with what he did. I have a problem with trying to put this size of a house in the buildable area of this lot. So somebody's going to have to work really hard to convince me to vote yes for this, because I have a problem in principle. This was self-created.
I wouldn't get hung up on the tail, because obviously that was to give water access and increase the value. I don't think that was as much to do with creating this rectangle that you can't fit a house on. I agree with you there.
I think one thing that's important is that there wasn't any ability to make this any wider. The land that is behind it could not be taken to make this lot wider, because then that lot would become nonconforming. So there wasn't any way to increase its width. Its length could be increased, but that's not going to help anything, and its length was in fact increased by rejiggering some of the lot lines from the property. So there wasn't any way to cure that, this issue, when the subdivision was done.
But it, so, I hear that. So long pause, I hear that. But it wasn't a buildable lot. It was created so that a house could be put on it, right? Because everybody knows that we're not going to allow a house, in other words, if this lot was 19,000 square feet, we would just say no, right? If, we don't grant variances if the lot's not big enough. So it was created to make it a buildable lot, and it's just very narrow.
Right.
Which is forcing you to ask for very large variances, not de minimis variances, but very large ones, as far as I'm concerned.
The tail of the lot, which does give some of the acreage and area to the lot, is for water access. So if you look at all of the lots along there, they were, people purchased certain areas, and now they have water access they didn't necessarily have before, because it was owned by somebody else.
Sure. Okay. I, I can let others speak, so.
Any other questions?
I mean, they, attorney Ellison said that the two director butters are in support. I mean, Mr. Alcock was making, you know, a strong case about, you know, the house being too close to the property line. I mean, the, the front yard setback was too far close to the street, so, and I agree with, with Michael, you know, the size of the house, and a self-created issue, but when those two director butters are not in opposition and are in support, I, it was hard for me not to approve this. I couldn't see why I couldn't. If the direct, you know, if the director butter was like, hey, you know what, I, I don't want this, or X, Y, Z, then it would have been a case closed for me. But Mr. Alcock's not being directly affected by it, in fact, he's four lots all the way I mean, that's kind of what's going on in my head. I don't know if anybody else feels about it.
My, yeah, my only thing in that, and Mr. Alcock was correct, the gentleman in the rear is selling the lot to the abutter on the left. So there is, there is a dual financial interest in this being approved. They created it to sell it. The gentleman on the left wishes to buy it, so he's not going to be against it. The guy's selling it, but God knows how much, is not going to be against it.
Not fast for us to, you know.
I don't know how you, I mean, I can see the hardship, I guess, but again, it goes back to created hardship.
I mean, I, anybody else feels about it? Maybe pick a walk-through again, continue it, and maybe do a site visit or independent, and I can get my eyes on it again and kind of just feel it out, if anybody's comfortable with that, or if you guys want to make a decision tonight, that's fine with me, too.
I don't need to see it again.
Yeah, I've, I've been there.
Okay.
Comments, James?
If, if the board has concerns about this, we would probably, we would like the opportunity for a continuance to reconsider what is being presented.
I don't need it. It's up to the board, but I don't need a continuance.
I have no problem. I mean, they might want to relook at the plans of the, the building and, and change things up. I mean, that might change some of the people's mind on, on this decision, or.
You know, I'm, I'm okay with the project. I just think, I hate to, I may have, but we're stuck with it. So I have no problem with it. All right. I think we're ready to proceed. Entertainer motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to request a continuance so that we can reconsider the
Bill, that's necessary.
If I shouldn't feel it's necessary, then.
So help, help, so, I'm, I'm not going to play hardball, but help me to understand why a continuance?
I, I'm concerned about the vote.
I'm going to vote no, so. I, I don't know what the rest of the board's going to do, and you obviously can withdraw without prejudice ultimately, if that's what you want to do. I think we generally, I'm sorry, I don't want to speak for the chairman, but we generally allow that.
I would, I mean, I don't have a problem allowing a, a continuance in case they want to modify their application. You know, we give that, that's a fair opportunity. So if you would like to continue, we would enter, we would allow that, I believe, and...
May I consult with the owners' counsel?
Sure.
We would like to continue to your next meeting, if possible.
Entertainer motion to continue to August 14th.
I would move.
Go ahead, Michael, sorry.
I'd move a continuance on this hearing until August 14th.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, roll call vote to continue this application to August 14th.
Mr. Gelati?
Yes.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Ms. Norton?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Okay, that's continued. My next application, I'm going to.
Thank you very much.
Have Ron be voting on this app. Have, uh, Ron be voting on this application. I will not be voting, but I will continue to run the meeting. I'm not accusing, I'm just giving our alternates an opportunity to participate. So our next application, Isabel Thomas, for a special permit of variance to construct a pool at 44 Leonard Street. Ernie Frontiero?
Yes, uh, for the record, Sal Frontiero, uh, 46 Middle Street for the applicant. I will attempt to, to share the screen, if you don't mind. Okay. Okay, so, um, most of you are familiar with this matter. Uh, this is the third time we've been here. So I wanna start with a little bit of history. Um, we were here in November of 2023 to undo relief that was granted by this board, uh, several years ago in 2005. And at that time, what happened was, uh, the lot configuration was sort of like this, try not to move it, but like that. And now we have seek, what happened is, back then, we, we sought to put the lot lines back to where they were originally. So that's what you see the configuration now, that straight line down. So as a result of that, all non-conforming rights were lost, so we had to get a, a bunch of different variances, uh, none of which affected construction, just in a technical sense, they were necessary, because the lot lost its grandfathered rights. Um, and, uh, as you may recall, the, the petitioner's 94-year-old mother lives next door at 17 Walnut, and one of the thing, when we reconfigured the lot lines, we moved the garage over to the Leonard Street lot. Um, and, uh, one of the reasons for it was to pay the mothers, you know, for her older age, and her daughter wants to be nearby her. Then what happened is the petition, the petitioner filed the second, uh, application, um, that was back in, um, 2024, and as a result of that, what happened is, um, you see this little area here, that was a small 364-foot addition that was put on. When that happened, there was a bit of a miscommunication between me and, uh, the petitioner. I had thought she had, uh, sort of deleted a desire to put a pool there. Apparently, she did not. We didn't find out about this until well after the decision was done. So, um, as a result of that miscommunication, it wasn't included. So now we're here, uh, seeking to amend that petition to add the pool in. Um, and we are asking for an additional, so we're asking for a modification of a variance, we're asking for an additional 3% lot coverage variance, and we're asking for the first time, a variance, uh, of 12 feet, for the 20-foot requirement of an accessory structure being at least 20 feet away from her primary structure. I won't bother going over the standard, uh, you know what the standard is, I'll just jump into applying it here. First of all, as far as the, uh, the variance goes, meeting the setback would cause the pool to be pushed way towards the middle of the lot. It's a rather small lot, that's the only area that's usable, really, so you would end up having no real usable yard without a pool smack dab in the middle. And the reason, one of the main reasons for the pool is, uh, aquatherapy for the petitioner's mother. Um, so they missed out on that this summer, uh, as a result of the miscommunication. And also, um, it's basically the, uh, allowing it to be closer, 12-foot variance also, you know, gives more area in the yard and, and, and does not encroach upon the, uh, parking area either. Um, and I submit it does not derogate from the intent of the zoning ordinance, because if one looks at, uh, the district's principal buildings, the, I would, I would think the underpinnings of that are probably, uh, crowding and safety for fires. So this would not derogate from the intent of the ordinance, because first of all, it's a pool, it's an in-ground pool, it does not protrude up at all, so no crowding issue. Second of all, you probably wanna pull as close to the house as possible if there's a fire, so, uh, you know, although it's, a pool is technically a structure, and is technically, um, subject to this requirement, I don't think this was intended to apply to a situation like this. So it's not the type of structure that I think, uh, was, was a reason for that 20-foot requirement. So I think the, it can be allowed without derogating from the intent of the zoning ordinance, um, and, and it does comply with the 30-foot setback from the street. It does comply in that it's not closer to the, to the streets than the existing structure. It's just that one, uh, dimensional requirement that is needed of variance for, of 12 feet. So I submit the variance should issue for that reason. Um, as far as the modification of the variance, um, under our ordinance, section 1.7.4, uh, existing variances may be modified by this board, provided that the interests of the neighborhood and the city are not impaired, but only after notice and cause shown. So here, um, obviously there's notice, um, and I would say that the increase from, of 3% is rather de minimis. We're going from a 3.8% variance to a 6.8% variance. Um, the property is either surrounded by, the, the pool is either surrounded by streets or the mother's lot, so it's not gonna really impact anybody whatsoever to that additional 3% of lot coverage. And again, the lot coverage, uh, could be a result of, the requirement could be a result of, of drainage, it could be a result of crowding, same thing applies here, it's an in-ground pool. So arguably, that may not have been one of the, um, structures contemplated by the lot coverage requirement. Also, um, it is, I think good cause is shown for this. A good cause is defined as a valid and justifiable reason for something. This is not a situation where the petitioner says, oh, I decided I wanna pool, I'm gonna go back to the zoning board. That would be a, you know, that's a bit of a waste of resources of this board. It was a result of a genuine mistake, um, between myself and my client on communication. There were a lot of parties involved, a lot of plans back and forth. So I think that's good cause. This is something that she originally wanted to include in the original petition. I misunderstood her. I'm falling on the sword as a result of that. Uh, for that reason, I think good cause is shown, so it asks that the, the variance be modified for a lot coverage by 3%. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we may implement a five-time application per lot. Any questions up front? Public testimony, anyone in favor of the application? Please come forward or raise your hand. Anyone in favor? Seeing none, is there anyone in opposition to the application? Seeing none? Discussion or motion?
I can make a motion if you want. Uh, so I'd move approval for, uh, both variances. I think hardship, uh, has been established, uh, and I would agree with his comments about the in-ground pool. Find it hard to believe that that's really what would be envisioned with distance between structures, even though a pool's considered a structure. I would want my pool sort of close to the poolhouse, not 20 feet away. So I'd move approval for both variances for the reasons stated, and write us a good report.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Roll call?
Ms. Norton?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Mr. Gelati?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Are decisions favorable? Appreciate a draft?
Be happy to do that.
For the last time, on this one.
On this lot. Okay, our next application is the application of Thomas Schmidt for a special permit of variances to allow access to a lot other than over its frontage at 22 Rear Eastern Point Road.
See if I can, oh, there we go. Okay, so, uh, again, Sal Frontiero, 46 Middle Street for Tom Schmidt, as trustee of the Barbara Bellistrice Revocable Trust. Mr. Schmidt is here with me, as is, uh, Dan Ottenheimer, the project engineer, um, because if we, if you have any technical questions, Dan is available to answer that. Uh, this is, uh, located in East Gloucester, uh, colonial in his picture right here. This is a two-family. All of these lots are owned by, uh, Mr. Schmidt as trustee. So, oh, sorry, I thought it was sharing. My apologies. Try that again. Okay. There we go. Okay, great, my apologies. Um, so, all of these lots are owned by Mr. Schmidt as trustee. Uh, this is the lot in question. If you see these red lines here, those are lot line configurations that we wanna undertake to make these, to make every lot compliant. Uh, it won't render any structures or lots non-compliant. Now, you'll see up here, the, the parcel does have sufficient frontage on Ledge Lane, but what, the issue is, is a stream that cuts it off. So, um, Mr. Schmidt examined the possibility of doing a wetlands crossing there. It was rather cost prohibitive, and, uh, as, as Mr. Ottenheimer could testify, um, the Conservation Commission doesn't really like wetlands crossings, and they will not grant them, if there's another reasonable alternative. So I submit here, we do have another reasonable alternative, um, which would be to access through Ledge Lane. Now, obviously, if the release is granted, I, I would think there'd be a condition that we do get the lot lines reconfigured.
To access through Eastern Point Road.
Yes, you can see it.
No, you said Ledge Lane.
Oh, my apologies. Eastern Point Road, my apologies. Yeah, thank you. As you can see, the gray area is the existing driveway, and the red is the added driveway. Um, and as a condition to the relief, we would need to go to the planning board for a Form A approval to reconfigure the lot line, so I think that should be a condition, if this board is inclined to, uh, allow the relief. And also, I think the intensity of the use of that driveway, uh, does affect whether it is adequate for access. So I think the board, uh, should know that we are willing to limit this to no more than a two-family. Your analysis might be different if it's a three-family, which could be done by special permit. Obviously, anything larger than that, that's not a large enough lot. But it could be up to three, the intention is a single or a two, and Mr. Schmidt has not yet decided whether or not he's going to sell it or build it himself. And as far as the intent of the zoning ordinance here, it would be to provide adequate room for emergency vehicles and whatnot, uh, so that's why you have your frontage requirement. I submit that could be met here, because the way going in, the driveway going in, as proposed to be expanded, is plenty wide enough. And, um, as Dan could also testify to, the, um, when you get a building permit, you have to show the fire department that you have adequate access. You know, you, a lot of times, they'll require a, a hammerhead turnaround or the like, so some of that will be taken care of when we get to that stage. Um, we didn't show a house here, we didn't show a driveway. I think when, um, we didn't show the driveway in the lot, I think when you are, uh, looking at a setback variance, it's important to have elevations, the exact location, and that type of thing. I don't think the same concerns are there for a frontage variance. It suffice to say that whatever's built there will be compliant with the setbacks. So I think that obviates the need to see elevations, because we are, at this point, unsure of whether or not we're going to, um, uh, you know, sell it, build a single or build a two here. So I think that the variance standard has clearly been on hardship, I mean, this is a classic hardship. And, and it's a financial one, but it can be a financial one if it's directly related to the soil topography and, and, and conditions like that, or shape. Here, the hardship is directly related to the fact that there's a stream. So the financial hardship does qualify as a hardship in this situation, and I think we've demonstrated that where, uh, it's obviously unique. No, I'm sure there's not a lot of lots in the area that have a stream cutting off frontage. Um, and I think we've demonstrated also that we're not derogating from the intent of the zoning ordinance, due to the fact that we're providing a, a much wider driveway, um, that'll be, uh, will be adequate for emergency vehicles, and also, uh, the fact that it'll be subject to, uh, approval of the fire department when a building permit is issued. I should also mention that the, the lot through which it goes is a two-family now. So the beginning of it will be served, would serve a two-family, and then at the end, it would also serve a two-family. So for those reasons, I'd ask that the variance, uh, issue. Thank you.
So, so you redrawing these lines would create a legitimate lot. How about the lot in the back? Is that gonna?
That has a house on it already.
It's a house lot already?
Yeah. You see the house towards the bottom?
Well, I see what's called.
There's no intention to, right now, there's no intention to split that off.
Split it off from what?
There's no intention to make that into two lots or anything of that. It's an existing house lot.
And how does it access?
It's accessed also from, uh, Eastern Point Road, but at the driveway that is associated with the inn. We looked at both options, whether to go through the inn lot or whether to go through the two-family. Uh, I spoke to Mr. Cadamatory, I spoke to Mr. Vacari, and we thought the best route would be to not overburden that driveway anymore. Then we're kinda getting into a common driveway type of situation. And I also should mention here that we will, if this lot is sold, uh, we will have a, a roadway maintenance agreement for the driveway. I think that's important. So I would submit that if the board is inclined to allow this, there'd be at least two conditions, one of which that the lot line configuration take place, and the second being that it's limited to no more than a two-family.
And also that you would get fire department approval and widen the driveway.
Yes.
And just so I understand, why aren't you trying to, um, get approval for a common driveway?
Well, I, I had asked Greg Cadamatory that question. He didn't think it was necessary based on the number of buildings here. Um, he did think it, it gets a little closer to that if we go through the other, um, driveway, because that would serve three different buildings. But I did, I did specifically ask Greg Cadamatory that question, because the planning board has jurisdiction for common driveway special permits, and he felt that the, uh, variance acts a lot by means other than the frontage was all the relief that was necessary. But in the spirit of a common driveway, we are willing to condition it also that if it is sold, that, that a, uh, common driveway maintenance agreement be recorded. That would be normally one of the requirements for a common driveway.
Okay, any other questions at this point? We'll take testimony. If anyone wishes to speak in favor of the application, please come forward. Raise your hand if you're on Zoom. Anyone in favor? Seeing none, any, anyone in opposition to the application? Any opposition? No one? There also a closed public testimony? Discussion or motion?
Kind of before, we did it over by Pond Road, we did it Magnolia, I'm pretty sure we did it Magnolia, we did it for J. McNiff over in West Gloucester. Uh, I think, I think since I've been on the board, I remember at least three times.
It's definitely, definitely sensible, well, option. No question. I'm sure the hardship to try to cross the stream is, is legit, so. I don't have any problems. Anybody? Let's see a motion.
Uh, application of Thomas for a permit in, uh, not, for, for...
Variants.
Variants. To all access to a lot, uh, other than over its own frontage at 22 Rear Eastern Point Road. Uh, I would move approval for the variance, uh, for the reasons stated. I think you have made a case, uh, for the hardship. The two things, remind me, Lauren, the two things that we want in there for conditions?
Yes, ma'am. It can't be a two fam, more than a two-family, right?
Yep, can't, one or two-family restricted. Yes.
A lot line.
In the lot lines.
The planning board approval of the lot lines.
Yeah, and planning board approval of the lot lines.
And widening the driveway and fire department approval.
Yeah, the fire department approval, I think, is implicit with a building permit. I don't know if, Dan, you can speak to that? Is that the case? So that's, I mean, we can make that a specific requirement, but I think it's a requirement in general for a building permit anyway, and I think Mr. Vacari is agreeing with that, so.
Unnecessary.
And I, I'm sorry?
Driveway maintenance agreement, you mentioned.
Yeah, so those three conditions, I think, are, are very fair and very necessary.
Make sure those are in there.
Sure.
That's my, uh, move approval for that variance.
Second.
Made and seconded? Roll call?
Mr. Canavo?
Yes, for the variance and conditions.
Mr. Nyman?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Norton?
Yes.
Mr. Gelati?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Are our decisions favorable?
Be happy to draft the decision. Thank you.
Okay, uh, two hearings left, and at the request of the applicant, we're gonna switch the order here. The, uh, application of Philip and Sharon Giacalone for a special permit and/or variance to convert a two-family to a three-family at 19 Church Street. Ernie Fava?
Good evening, I need to come in as a panelist, sorry, guys. No, it's okay, I didn't raise my hand. Am I there? Keep saying I'm coming in, but I don't come in. Join as panelist. Let's try this one more time, one second. Sorry for the technical delays, guys, let me just get this going. Sorry for the technical delays, guys. Let me just get this going. All right, I'm back in. Just see me? Join as panelist. There we go. Thank you. All right, for the record, while I share my screen, my name is Joel Favazza. I'm an attorney at Seaside Legal Solutions with an address of 123 Main Street here in Gloucester. Tonight, I am here on behalf of Philip and Sharon Giacalone. Philip is here tonight in the blue. And we are talking about 19 Church Street. So the proposed work, we are looking to convert the third floor to a third dwelling unit. This will involve expanding the structure on the existing footprint as well as expanding the structure outside the existing footprint. The expansion outside the existing footprint is conforming as a setbacks. Does cause some lot coverage issues, however. So we are in the R5 zone. We are an undersized lot, about 200 square feet, where 5,000 is required. We're covering almost 49% of it already, where 35 is the maximum. And the structure is also too close to the front yard, the front setback on, I believe, Church Street. And it's too close to the left side yard, too close to the right side yard, and it's over 30 feet in height as measured from average grade. So because of the change of use, we lose all the previous non-conforming protections. So I have to ask you for a laundry list of variances. And as you can see, of those variances, I've only highlighted two in yellow. Those are the two that would be an increase to a non-conformity or a new non-conformity. That's the lot area per dwelling unit and the lot coverage. In addition to those variances, I would need three special permits, one for use to make it a three-family, one for height to allow it to remain 32.6 feet above average grade. And then alter expand just in case because we are filling in a portion of the lot where there is no building currently. Usual, I have the full set of plans that shows you the site plan. We have the previous floor plans, the proposed floor plans, profile shots. Before, after, couple 3D renderings. This one is if you're coming the wrong way down toward Pine Street. You'd look on your right and see the house. And this is if you're coming down Church Street from up on Prospect, coming down the hill on the left, it would look like this. Here, it is situated in the neighborhood. That's the GAS map. Here's the aerial photograph. And this is kind of a zoomed-in picture of the house itself in question. So dive into the standards for variances. We have to find literal enforcement of the GZO would create a hardship. This is one of those ones where there's no ability to add additional land. That's a dense neighborhood. The lot's technically unbuildable. If you go, hey, we want you to comply, there is no complying. It's too small, and the house is in all the wrong places. Does the hardship relate to the soil or shape, topography of the structure, or the landing question? This house has been there. The city records have it at 1900, which tell you that. It's probably sometime before 1900. And then you have to ask if we grant the relief, are you going to be creating, you know, a detriment to the public good or going against the intent of the ordinance? I would say no, you're going to be providing new safe housing in the high-density residential district. You're improving the aesthetic and assessed value of the existing structure. And pragmatically, it's going to enable a family to remain in Gloucester. Again, I do want to talk about the new, there's two variances that are about increased or new non-conformities. So the lot area per dwelling unit is a new non-conformity. It's 1,000 square feet per dwelling unit. So right now, it complies. We go to three dwelling units, we're short by 65 square feet per unit. Now, lot area per dwelling unit is a density control. And, you know, as in how many people are going to live within a certain area, right? This project is proposing to add three bedrooms total. One of those bedrooms is on the first floor, and that's allowable by rights. If you deny this, they can turn that first-floor office into a bedroom regardless, right? So you're making density like that. The two that are going to be in the new unit could be done with a special permit to alter and expand if it wasn't adding a third unit. If I came here and said, hey, I want to dormer out the third floor, it's a special permit, it's only that substantial detriment standard. And they could put four bedrooms up there if they wanted to. You could create a much more dense situation in this building than the three units we're proposing. However, because we are in this variance standard, we have to look at it like that. So although we are exceeding the lot area per dwelling minimum, I would argue that we're not actually creating a more dense situation than you would find in a house like this regardless of the unit count. Similarly, for lot coverage, that is already a non-conformity, but it is the non-conformity that is being increased, is going from 48.8 to 53.3. But the majority of this footprint is already covered by, you know, deck and patio areas. It's not like we're taking open space. It's not like we're heading toward another property. It's busy heading toward the street, on the Proctor Street side. So again, it is increasing non-conformity, but it's not chewing up open space otherwise was, you know, pristine or frankly very useful for the neighborhood. And so with that, I'll move on to the use permit. If you can grant those variances, then you have to go, okay, well, this is proposed use in harmony with the GZO. So social, economic, and community needs. So I want to talk a little bit, as I wrote in the cover letter or the narrative. So what we have here, I'm not sure if any of you noticed, we have a bit of a housing crisis in Gloucester. We also have an affordability crisis in Gloucester. And so Joe here today, he's in his early 30s. He and his wife just had their first child, 10-month-old. They are currently renting an apartment at Joe's sister's house. And now Mr. Giacalone's wife have said if we can get this third unit, we can sell it to you as a condo unit. And being frank, this is probably the only realistic opportunity for someone in Joe's position to acquire ownership interest in the city that he and his family have lived in. It's just impractical for, you know, I think about my own concerns and how difficult it is for me. And I had a few years had start on them, right? So we're, you know, addressing that community need by allowing this unit to exist. Traffic and safety, you only need three parking spaces in these districts, free or provided. And we're not changing the parking so it's a familiar access off Proctor Street. Adequacy of utilities and public services, we're in the downtown infrastructure, you're walking distances to city offices and fire department, the police department. Neighborhood character and social structure, this is a dense multifamily neighborhood. And it's actually traditionally multi-generation households. I grew up originally in 25 Pine Street, and that had the La Quada's on the first floor, and their adult daughter on the second floor unit, and the sister in the lower unit. And so if you look here at the overall view of the immediate neighborhood, these are all the houses that have two units in them already, including the subject property. These are all the houses that have three units, the amount we're asking for. And then the guy right across the street has six. So this is certainly right in line with the type of density and unit count you find in this neighborhood. Again, that one bottom left was my old house. While it's a natural environment, it's a developed lot. We're not going to change there. Fiscal impact, one of those win-win. The city gets to increase the value of the existing units, gets to have a new growth piece of revenue from the new unit. And then the fiscal impact to the family, as I mentioned earlier, this is, you know, the viable way in which they become homeowners in their hometown, you know, before the age of 50. And vulnerability to flood impacts, we're not in a flood zone, so we're good to go there. Moving on to the height permit, you have to find the heights consistent with the neighborhood character, not detrimental to the neighborhood because of obstruction of views, overshadowing. First off, there's no actual increase in the height. It's an extension of the height, but the highest point will still remain in that peak. It'll probably pop out a little bit from that dormer. And there are other, many other tall dormer buildings in the immediate neighborhood. Top right picture is looking down Pine Street. The subject property is at the very end. And then you can see to the right on the bottom right, right across the street, there's a dormered-out three-story blue building. And then there's a second picture at bottom left that shows the sixth unit and how tall that is. And you can also see a shot up the hill. Again, this is the very bottom of the hill, so a little extra height down here really is not going to matter a whole lot compared to the houses that are around it and houses that are further up the hill. And lastly, special permit to alter and expand, that's the very basic. Cannot be substantially more detrimental than what exists presently. This one, I argue, applies only to that infill portion. That would be the alteration, expansion that's not covered by the variances, et cetera. There's no impact to the neighborhood by filling this portion of the lot in. And so with that said, once again, this is the laundry list of relief I need. The reality is, we're just looking to dormer out this house, fill in a little gap where there's currently a deck you can see in that picture, and let them add a third unit so the family can stay in Gloucester and stay together. And so I'll ask you for all those special permits and those variances, and happy to answer questions if you need.
Thank you. Any questions up front? Okay, we'll take public testimony. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application, please come forward or raise your hand. Anyone in favor? Seeing none, is there any opposition to the application? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, we'll close public testimony, discussion, or motion?
You put the, just put your relief sheet up there if you would. That'd be helpful.
I was going to say that was not to follow. John, keep repeating it.
I'm going to make this motion. You can if you want.
Sure. Move to the, oh, sorry. Application of Philip and Sharon Giacalone for a special permit and variances to convert a two-family to a three-family at 19 Church Street. Map 15, Lot 26. Specifically, the variances under 1.7 for lot area, lot area per dwelling unit, front yard, right side yard, left side yard, lot coverage as set forth in the application, as well as a special permit under 1.8.3 to convert into a three-family, and a special permit to exceed the height limitations under 3.1.6A, and a special permit to alter and expand under 2.4.3. Do we need to state? Okay. So move.
Motion made?
Yeah, I'm going to second all of those motions. I think good arguments have been made throughout.
Motion made and seconded on a listing of variances and special permits. Roll call vote.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes, for all the relief requested.
Ms. Norton?
Yes.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Mr. Gelati?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Also vote yes and for our decision. Appreciate a draft.
Thank you.
Okay, our last hearing of the evening is the application of Karen and Vincent Tibbetts appealing a decision of the building commissioner at 12 and 12A Watson Street.
Good evening. Once again, let me pull my slideshow up. For the record, my name is Joel Favazza. I'm an attorney at Seaside Legal Solutions with an address of 123 Main Street in Gloucester. I'm here tonight. I may have Karen Tibbetts and Vincent D. Tibbetts Jr. They are the butters to 12 Watson Street. Tibbetts is here in the audience this evening. Karen cannot be here. Quick background, in 2023, the owners of 12 Watson Street sought to renovate and expand their house. There was a building permit issued on 4/18/23. Reviewing the file, I believe that should not have been issued to begin with. There were zoning issues apparent in the plans. There's also FEMA flood plain code violations. We're clear that those are not before us tonight, did not cite those in my letter, and the building inspector did not respond to those. So I'm going to move past that, the FEMA stuff. The owners got permission from my clients to erect the fence several feet onto 14 Watson. This is a tight neighborhood, and they said, we put this fence up, we can keep the construction activity from spilling into your lot. So the fence was put up and it was maintained throughout the construction. Toward the end of '24, the rebuild was completed, a flagpole was erected without a permit. The fence comes down, and the Tibbetts family discovers encroachments, and they seek enforcement from the building department. There's a violation notice sent from the building inspector to the owners of 12 Watson citing an exhaust vent not on their property. Gave them until January 21, 2025, to correct. Also said if it's not corrected, there'll be a $300 per violation per day fine assessed. The violation was not corrected. The Tibbetts dug further in and sent a letter on June 2 covering all the violations that we were able to discern minus the FEMA violation, which was not part of the letter. And the building inspector provided a written response on 6/17 saying no further action was to be taken on the four issues. The ongoing violations, we see them, are, one, the HVAC vents. There are two vents that still exist. The intake appears to still be active. It's understanding the exhaust has been disconnected and rerouted to the chimney, which is appreciated, but the actual pipes still remain. There has been discussion about having them removed. It has not gone anywhere, and I suspect it's because the intake is still active. So it's not a matter of just going over there and taking them off if they could. The second issue was light trespass. There's a flagpole on a rear porch, that light that shines into multiple windows all night at 14 Watson. This violates the light trespass ordinance. Third is the flagpole itself. The flagpole meets the definition of structure for the GZO. It was never permitted, and it could not be permitted due to the placement and the height. And four, the house rebuild itself. It never received the requisite ZVA relief. Encroaches over a shared property line. That's that violates FEMA flood plain code. So the first one, HVAC pipes, this is an instrument survey done by Hancock. And you'll see that it notes the end of the three-and-a-half PVC vent is .9 feet over the property line. The house is basically on the property line. And then the end of the four-inch PVC vent is about .3 feet over the property line. And this is a photo. You can see the vents. Again, the property line is basically the shingles. This next picture is just a closer look of those two pipes, and this is a profile. You can see that is when the exhaust was still active. Again, it's understanding the exhaust is no longer in use. But they're both still there. We last checked at 6:30 this evening before coming here. So on January 7, the building inspector recognized that these were a violation. They ordered them corrected within 14 days, established fines. But then on June 17, he says, the matter's been investigated and resolved. The problem being, nothing has changed. Both vent pipes are still there. So if it was a violation back in January, you know, they had until January 21 to get them out of there before fines are getting assessed. Why June 17th? Is all of a sudden the matter investigated and resolved? Ask you to overturn that and instruct the building inspector to resume enforcement based on his original January letter. Second one, light trespass. The original flagpole light was mounted at the top of the pole. The building inspector ordered the light removed. That's the old light. And so the owner removed the old light and then installed a new one just as bright at the base. This is still in violation. This is a shot you can see from a room in my client's house with a television on. The light pole is notably brighter than a television in the same room of the picture taker. Just to bring it to speed, light trespass is defined as illumination that goes beyond the lot lines on the lot in which it originates at a level greater than the natural illumination as measured at the lot line. The administrator of that is the inspector of buildings, and it says right there on four highlighted, light trespass on residential property is prohibited except for lights associated with street, roadway, or public safety lighting. And this is not associated with street, roadway, or public safety lighting. It is clearly shining way brighter than the ambient light would be at the lot line into my client's property. And in fact, there's two instances. There's the flagpole and this rear porch light. And so again, we would ask, you know, this is the building inspector's determination. That has been investigated, and appropriate action has been taken. Issue was resolved. No action has been taken. Those lights are probably on right now as we speak because it's dark out. So we'd ask you to overturn the building inspector's determination there and order him to please begin enforcing the prohibition against light trespass for these two lights. Third would be the flagpole as relates to zoning. It meets the definition of a structure, have the definition straight from the GZO right there, anything constructed or erected, the use of which requires a fixed location on the ground or attachment to something located on the ground. This is constructed on a large concrete base in a fixed location on the ground is a structure. GZO also says, no building or structure shall be constructed without a building permit. There's never been a building permit applied for or granted. And structures, as you know, obviously, must comply with dimensional requirements. This flagpole is less than 10 feet from the property line, which means it violates the accessory structure setback requirement. And because it's more than 12 feet tall, it actually violates this accessory structure maximum height allowance, which you either have to comply with or then comply with principal building setback and push it even further. But again, the building inspector said, the office considered a request and determined that no zoning violation exists. Even though it's clear from the file, there's never been a permit applied for or granted for this structure. Mr., the building inspector declined to take any action. We would ask you to overturn that determination and order the building inspector to take enforcement action against this unpermitted structure on the property. And lastly, we have ongoing violations regarding the house rebuild. So the previous structure was expanded as part of the 20324 rebuild. This is the site plan filed with the building permit that shows proposed addition in red and the proposed expanded deck. So it was, you know, it was clear that, to the credit of the neighbor, you know, they were very clear. They were going to be expanding this building. However, and this is, this is the photo showing, you know, the before and the after. Under 244 of the GZO, a building inspector can make a determination, if you're gonna expand a structure but not increase the nonconformity, the building inspector can make the determination if it's gonna be substantially detrimental or not. If it's a conforming house on a nonconforming lot, or if it's a nonconforming house on a conforming lot. But he cannot make the determination if the house and the lot are nonconforming. You have to come to the ZBA. This was, this should have been sent to the ZBA before the building permit was issued. It wasn't. Separately, the previous structure existed pursuant to a variance granted in 1972. The right side yard relief allows a 2.5-foot setback, so a little bump out in the front. GZO 174 only allows a modification of a variance after a public hearing with the ZBA. No public hearing was held. So again, this, this building permit never should have been issued to begin with, and the zoning violations are still there. They've never modified the variance, and this has never received any relief by way of a special permit to alter or expand. Nevertheless, regarding the deck and house located in 12 Watson, the office reviewed the building permit, application, and building file and declines to take any enforcement actions. So once again, I would ask you to please overturn that determination and order the building inspector to seek enforcement of the GZO related to the house rebuild and the zoning implications thereof. Lastly, I just want to be clear, what is or is not before the board tonight? All you're tasked with this evening is reviewing Mr. Vicari's letter, applying the relevant ordinance provisions, determining whether you're gonna uphold or overturn his determinations. You are not tasked tonight with determining whether you would grant the relief if requested. You're only asked whether a relief should be requested. And additionally, you're not tasked with refereeing the ongoing dispute between the property owners at 12 and 14 Watson Street. I'm not here to discourage anybody. I can't, you know, I don't wanna get into that. There's obviously some bad blood out there right now. This is about the letter that Mr. Vicari wrote, and whether or not those four items he declined to take action on need to be overturned or upheld by this board based on what's before you and the relevant ordinances. So again, here's my request, that you overturn the building inspector's determination about the violations. Require him to begin to resume pursuit of his January violation notice. Require him to issue new violation notices to the new violations that were presented, and require the owner of 12 Watson to seek permits and/or ZBA relief as is necessary to bring what has already been done into conformity with the relevant ordinances. I thank you, and I'll end it there.
Thank you. Now I'd like to call on Assistant General Counsel Rocco DiFilippas, who will give an opinion and defend the building commissioner's decisions.
Good evening. Rocco DiFilippas, Assistant General Counsel for the city. Oh, yeah, so I think as the board can see, there's some pretty clear jurisdictional defects in the appeal that's before you, namely, as the applicant has acknowledged. They had actual notice of the building permit that many of these issues flow from, and the law is clear that an applicant may not sit on known zoning violations and choose to later come back through a request for enforcement if they have missed that 30-day statutory appeal of the issuance of a building permit. So I think that the board has before it an issue that is outside of its jurisdiction in many regards. Is specifically any of the purported violations that flow from the construction that came out of that building permit. That would have all been covered by the building permit. The 30-day appeal deadline has passed, and the law is clear in Gallivan versus Zoning Board of Appeals of Wellesley, a 2008 case, that, that if a party has actual knowledge of the ad issuance of a building permit and fails to appeal it, then that's gonna deprive them of jurisdiction to seek relief from purported zoning violations contained in that permit. As to the light trespass issue, the, the issue of light trespass is not in the zoning ordinance. The zoning board of appeals does not have the authority to review decisions in the code of ordinances, but only those coming from chapter 48 and the Gloucester zoning ordinance. So I would ask the board to consider that that request is outside of its authority. Similarly, with the flagpole, I think that what the board has before it is a complaint that is made, I think in September of 2024, that is investigated by the building commissioner. And now we are here in July. It's way beyond the timeframe for an appeal when the building commissioner declines a request for enforcement. I think that this claim is time barred in regards to the flagpole. But nevertheless, I, I agree with my brother that a structure is defined as something fixed to the ground. But a flagpole is also reasonably interpreted as a yard accessory. And in that definition that the GZO provides, when it gives the concrete specific examples of structures of things fixed to the ground, it says buildings, mobile homes, billboards, tall fences, swimming pools, and tanks, and then refers to things that are like or part of those. And so I think you've got kind of a spirit of the law, letter of the law, and the building commissioner makes a decision in an area that is not, it's not clearly defined in the building code. It's not clearly defined in the zoning ordinance. And so I believe it's a reasonable application, but nevertheless, I think that the board should consider the jurisdiction it has to determine this appeal.
There was another issue of request for imposition of fines.
I did see that in the application. I didn't hear my brother address it in his, specifically in his request for relief. I just think that that's outside of the scope of relief that the board would be authorized to provide. The, the zoning board is an administrative body. Fines are imposed by judges after, in a judicial process after conviction for violation of a zoning ordinance, so I don't believe that the board has any authority to impose any fines as a result of a request for enforcement.
Okay, is that it?
Yes.
Thank you. Rebuttal?
Thank you. So I wanna point out, I am not appealing the building permit more than 30 days or a building permit was issued. What I did was notify the building inspector of violations, and per 48, these violations have six years because they work, they were, well, I'm sorry. The, the flagpole is a 10-year. The flagpole is erected without a permit. It's a 10-year window to bring it to the attention of the building department for the building department to take action. The issues regarding the house, as the house was built pursuant to a building permit, arguably to the plan submitted, that's only a six-year window. But it's not, I'm not appealing the building permit within 30 days of its issuance. I am notifying the building inspector of zoning violations within the six and or 10-year window. And I'm asking this board to say, hey, we need you to enforce the zoning ordinance. Just because the neighbor can't enact a private action to appeal the building permit anymore does not mean that we are okay as a zoning board with you allowing obvious and intentional zoning violations to persist after they are brought to your attention years before the deadline to enforce against them is over. If the board's gonna take the position that, hey, as long as no neighbor can privately sue about it, we don't care about zoning violations that shouldn't have been, shouldn't have occurred in the first place, that's a very different zoning board than you're just dealing with. If this zoning board's gonna say, hey, this ordinance is important. We hold everyone to the same standard. We understand mistakes can be made, and that maybe these zoning violations were missed at the initial application phase. Nevertheless, they are required, now they've brought to the attention, to be adjudicated. I know you're not a precedent-setting board. I'll give you a quick example. Some of you may remember this. Years ago, out in East Gloucester, got a building permit to build a large barn to store some cars. Building inspector at the time said, "Looks good. No relief needed." We are at the point of putting siding and windows on months and months and months down the road. Neighbor called up the inspector and said, "Hey, I think they need zoning relief." Building inspector looked at it again and said, "Oh, you know what? I was wrong. I shouldn't have issued that building permit." Put a stop work order on there and sent my client and me to this board to get relief for the building that had been in construction for seven or eight months. It's the same thing here. Again, the neighbor wasn't, wasn't appealing the building permit. Too late for that. But the neighbor alerted the building department to a zoning violation well within the six or 10-year span. And the, the building department said, "Hey, I can't pick and choose when I enforce the zoning ordinance and when I don't enforce the zoning ordinance based on convenience. I have to enforce the zoning ordinance." And they sent us to this board to take care of it. I'm asking you to instruct Mr. Vicari to do the same thing here. I don't care whose fault it is. There are zoning violations on that property. They need to be addressed. For all I know, they'll be here in two, two months with an application. You'll grant all the relief that's necessary, and then everyone goes home. But that's the right way to fix this, if that's the way it gets fixed. To say, hey, the neighbors can't sue about this, so just leave it alone? That's not the way this should work, and I ask you again to please overturn the building inspector. Require him to enforce the code violations. Require the neighbor to come before this board as needed for the relief for what has already been built out there. Thank you.
Any advice from counsel? Muted, welcome. You're muted.
Sorry about that. I would just say to the board that this very issue that my brother just raised is the very heart of the Gallivan versus Zoning Board of Appeals of Wellesley case, where the court balanced this idea that there is this 30-day limited window to appeal a building, building permit versus the six-year-long period to raise a zoning violation that occurs under a building permit. And the, and the court weighed the equity of allowing a butter to choose between those two paths, and, and it indicated that you know, it's not the legislative purpose to give such a long period of time for someone to sit on a to sit on a known zoning violation after someone has incurred the expense of construction. And the distinguishing component here with the, the example that my brother raised is that a building commissioner has a different legislative framework that he's operating under. It's not the same as for a butter. The law is clear that a butter may not, after they have actual notice of an issuance of a billing permit, wait and then later bring a zoning enforcement action outside of that period of time. So I would just say that these issues regarding equity have been taken up and considered by the courts, and the holding of these cases are clear, that the board would not have jurisdiction to hear this appeal.
Thank you. I'm uncomfortable with the position that I'm in right now. I don't know how we can do that on Zoom.
Can I just ask a question? Because it's getting late and getting tired, so maybe just this is for Attorney Falaza. The applicant, they filed this dispute. How long after? You're seeing this, there's like a six or 10-year window. Was it within months or was it within years? I don't know. Maybe I'm missing just
So the, the, the first time my clients raised the issue of the pipes was at the very end of 2020, like, you know, the occupancy permit was issued in December of 2024. The fence came down for the first time. My client saw these pipes that had been constructed, and they complained immediately. And a violation notice was issued immediately. And then 14 days went, gone. No fines, no order, no nothing. And now the building inspector's position is, this is resolved. The pipes are there still. They haven't moved. And again, I'm not appealing the building permit. I get that.
No, I, I get that. So that's the first one for me. And then the flagpole. Again, what was the window? I, I'm just trying to connect the dots on, was this, you know, done years later? Because there go, obviously, there's some internal issues going on, and we can understand what's going on. But from a legal standpoint, I, I support your argument. I just need to understand some of the, the things that happened along the way for, for me to make that decision. So the pipe thing, I agree with you. I mean, as soon as the fence came down, they saw that. Obviously, there was a clear violation. The pipe should be removed. I mean, if I lived there and you're saying they're not operating, but who's to know if they will ever operate again, and you're just pouring toxic fumes or, or whatever exhausts coming into your property, that one for me would be a big one. Again, the flagpole, what was timetable on that, Joe?
The flagpole was constructed recently in connection with the renovation of, of the lot. And again, complaints were made initially. Building inspector took some action and said, hey, get that light off of there. Tried it again and say, well, it's still too close. You know, this thing comes down, it's gonna take out my client's fence, it's gonna land, you know, my clients, their dogs, their children, grandchildren, the bag, it's landing on them, right? And so we said, hey, we gotta move this. We got unofficial. No. I'm not gonna make them move that, which led to me having to write the letter, which then gives us the appeal. But again, I'm within my time for the letter.
Oh, that's what I'm saying. Sorry, sound.
And this again, if, if the city's position is that if the city's position is that this is not appealable, well, I'm sorry, but again, too late. I have an official letter from the building inspector on city letterhead telling me that if I disagree with these four points he's made, I can appeal this to you. So now show up and say, you can't appeal these. Excuse me. It says right, I'm not, I'm not making this up. I'm reading what the City Gloucester and Special Services Department letterhead, signed by the, the building commissioner, says that I have a right to appeal these four issues to this board. Here I am. I filed my application timely.
In a timely manner.
Yeah, and I did.
That letter was in January.
No, June 17th. We didn't appeal the January letter because it said, get these pipes out of here. We said, great. Then they didn't. June 17th said, I'm not taking any action on these issues. You have
That sounds, that sounds a pretty reasonable time for me. If it was years later, I'd be like, I don't know why we even here, but I mean, this sounds all within a short span of time, like I see it all the time, unfortunately. Yeah, sorry.
The issue before us is, do we have jurisdiction?
That's the issue.
That city, city council is saying we don't have jurisdiction.
Why are we having this conversation?
Well, he, he has a right to come before us. But we have to decide.
If we do have jurisdiction or not.
Right. And, I mean, the advice we've been getting is that each element of the appeal is either untimely or falls outside of the ZBA's jurisdiction. Before we even begin, would even consider the merits of each piece of this, and what we agree or don't agree with, we're not even discussing that, I don't think. I think we're, we're discussing whether this appeal is valid and whether we have jurisdiction. There are plenty of things in here that I know we don't have jurisdiction on.
Mr. Chairman, make a suggestion to get, to maybe help us out with this evening. Would it make sense, you know, Attorney DeFilippas has raised some legal arguments, cited some case law. Would it make sense to continue this, allow both, you know, city legal, allow the neighbors, council's here tonight, and allow my office to provide, you know, legal briefs for this board to consider? Because if you're, if you're turning on jurisdiction, that's a very legal argument. I think it'd be right for the neighbor's attorney and for my, for me, myself also, to provide you also with our, you know, opinions that you can review in executive session at a later meeting with counsel for the city, and then come back out into session and make your determination as to whether you're gonna hear these or not from there.
I, yeah, I have no problem with that. Keep in mind, legal briefs would have to be submitted a week ahead, or we would have to actually continue the next hearing if they weren't, so.
We can push it a month.
Keep that in mind.
Let's push it a month. I, I like the continuance.
Okay. Entertained a motion to continue the
Allow this gentleman to speak or not?
No.
No.
There's no standing.
Put my paperwork away.
Or not, you don't have standing to
Are we continuing this?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. And the application of Karen and Vincent Tibbetts appealing a decision of the building commissioner at 12 and 12A Watson Street, continue this hearing to August 28th?
Second.
Thank you.
Motion made, seconded, roll call.
Mr. Delotti?
Yes.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Ms. Norton?
Yes.
Mr. Perisi?
Yes.
So we continue to the 28th?
Thank you.
Any briefs? We need them in before the 21st.
21st of August for the briefs, Mr. Chair.
Wait a minute, I got everybody talking.
I'm just confirming 21st of August for the briefs, Mr. Chair.
Who's asking that question?
This is, yeah, thank you.
Okay, one at a time, through the chair, address, get it, get recognized. Rocco?
I was just confirming that you, the board would like the brief on August 21st.
Yeah, that's our rules. If it came in after, within a week, we would automatically have to continue.
Thank you.
Before we're okay, that gives us time to review.
We got to have it in the recording.
Put that right on your chin, sir. Put it right on your...
Thank you. I should have seen that all night. My name is Paul Manese. I'm an attorney with Lewis Brisboy in Boston. My address there is 60 State Street. I'm also a resident of Gloucester and live at 13 Brightside Ave. My question for you, Mr. Chairman, is that you suggested that we didn't have standing earlier this evening. I just want to be sure that we have standing to submit a brief on jurisdiction.
Yes, any citizen can submit a brief. What I was referring to was having an opportunity to be in the debate about the issue, but you certainly can submit to the board your thoughts, your brief, but before the 21st.
Thank you.
Okay, that is continued. Thank you all. You got your packets, there's only a couple hearings next and one continued, I think, so that'll be lighter. Anybody have any issues, questions, problems, things you want to bring up? If not, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Seconded, roll call to adjourn.
Ms. Norton?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Mr. Delotti?
Yes.
Mr. Perisi?
Yes, we are adjourned.
Have a good night, guys.
See you later.